I'll be, uh, part second. Meeting on Stanley County Board of Education to order. This time I'll ask Ms. Lynn Gibson to give us an invitation and play.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for your goodness and the many blessings that you have given to us. Lord, I thank you for Stanley County Schools, our wonderful county office staff, our school administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our students and their families. May you richly bless each and every one of them. Be with us now as we enter into our meeting. Help us to be wise in the decisions that we make. Grant us humility to always do your will in all that we do and say, "In your name we pray." Amen. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
This time, Chair will take a motion that the board go into closed session for Personnel Matters, General Statute 14331811A6, Student Matters, Court of Justice, General Statute 14331811A1, Attorney Filing Matters, Court of Justice, General Statute 14331811A3.
May we go into closed session?
Motion by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Graves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is taken. The board will move into closed session. I'll call the board back into open session. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. We're grateful for your attendance and look forward to some recognitions this evening. So, this time, we are going to recognize Dr. Dennis, if you're ready, sir.
Yes, sir.
For the recognitions.
Thank you very much. The first recognitions we have are for our science fair, Regional Science Fair place, the students who placed. We have three students we want to recognize, and Jennifer's here. Hey, you want to come help me? Excellent. And I want to say this too, Mr. Chance, that I was a science teacher and I was in charge at a science fair, and even when I was at West Stanley, you know, we had a team that went to the Regional Science Fair. My cousin actually won the science fair that year. So, you know, I'm a science nerd, I am. I come by it honest. And so, when I say I'm really proud of these kids, I am really proud because I know how much hard work goes into it, and I can really appreciate their love for science. So, we'll call them up one at a time. The first, the board wants to recognize Charlie Shaver. (APPLAUSE). I'm talking to him. Charlie, you are first place Regional Science Fair. That's outstanding. Can you tell me a little bit about your project?
Well, I did it because I use a lot of batteries, like I use RC cars and use lots of flashlights. Charlie wanted to see which battery brand lasted the longest.
And which one lasted the longest?
Uh, any of the, like, the name brands, Energizer, Ever Ready, and Duracell.
Uh-huh. Which one out of those three, did one last longer than the other?
Um, they, it lasted about, about the same time.
Oh, okay, okay. And I understand you don't want to promote one brand over the other.
Yeah, there's every brand in here tonight.
That's, that's good to know, and that's, that's really something useful. That's good to know when you buy batteries, which one's worth the best. So, congratulations.
Okay.
And we'll get a picture with the board just a minute. Go. Mom, Dad, if y'all want to take a picture, if y'all want to take a picture.
There you go. There you go.
All right. Congratulations. You can just stand there. I love you in just a minute, yeah.
And these two are together.
These two are together. Okay, so we have a team effort here. Second place in the Regional Science Fair goes to Lucas Mullis and Noah Waits, Jr. Engineering. All right. Here we go. Where's Lucas?
That's, yeah, we're going to skip.
My son's name's Lucas, but he destroys stuff. He doesn't build it. So, gentlemen, can you get, tell us a little bit about your project?
We built the Hoverboard Powered Cart, HUBLIC, and the purpose for our project was to help our lunch ladies at school.
Awesome. That's outstanding. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all coming up, if you want to take a picture? Why don't y'all stand just a little, we'll go a little, we'll go three of us. Thank you. Y'all stand up here with, uh, yeah. Y'all want to get a picture. The next group I want to acknowledge are some of our principals. Our principals went through a program through NC PAPA called the Distinguished 2020-2021 Distinguished Leadership in a Remote Learning Environment Program. I've been to a DLP program through the NC PAPA. It was not this one, it wasn't the one toward remote learning, but I will tell you, they do a top-notch job. They put together a very good program with some rigorous activities, and I'm so glad to see so many of our principals have joined or went through this cohort because right now, remote learning environment is extremely important. And I know NC PAPA, like, again, they put together a good product, so I'd like to see that so many of our principals have taken it upon themselves to be more distinguished leaders when it comes to remote learning, especially in the environment we're in today. So, the following staff I'd like to recognize, first is Stephanie Odom, the principal at Richfield Elementary School, Ann Miller, a curriculum coach at Richfield, and McClendon, the principal at West Stanley High School. Yeah, y'all come on up here, I'm sorry. Don't be scared. Jennifer Flo, assistant principal at West Stanley High School, Mary Ingram, West Stanley High School. Ms. Dombrowski could not be here tonight. She also was principal at Oprah STEM. Debbie Rolls, curriculum coach at Oprah STEM.
Just call me Mary.
Joy Hathcock, the principal at Aquadale, and Kevin Adams, the principal at the Stanley Early College. Please give him a round of applause. Hey, Kevin, Kevin.
It's a little challenging with six feet apart.
You need a drone.
It's true.
I think we may do two shots.
Squeeze a minute. You got to squeeze in together.
Just hold your breath.
Hold your breath.
Just hold your breath.
Thank you all, and congratulations.
Congratulations. And I was going to mention this later, but the last group, and I don't believe they're here today, but the last group I wanted to acknowledge was our social workers. We only have a few social workers. The few we have are outstanding. It is, they are recognized this month, and then, you know, I'll bring that up again later, but we have, we have a crowd that's been working really hard, especially trying to reach out to students who aren't at school and we're having a hard time reaching out to, so they've been kind of doing double time, and I wanted to acknowledge them as well. All right. Thank you. And y'all can feel free to stay as long as you want for the board need. If not, then...
Next on the agenda tonight is the Rotary Dictionary Project. Ms. Jan Getz.
Vicki, would you mind?
Sure.
Would you want to give them?
Yeah.
We brought one for each other. Thank you all. My name is Jan Getz. I'm the president of the Album Mall Rotary Club, and I was talking with Vicki, and we just kind of felt like it'd be a good idea for y'all to know how Rotary supports the schools and the children of Stanley County. Every year, for the past, I think, eight years, we have, we have worked with the West Stanley Album Mall Club, and we give a dictionary to every single third grader in the county. And we've done this through, it's called the Dictionary Project. It's a nonprofit organization out of Charleston, South Carolina, and we order these dictionaries. They're especially for third graders, and they're so neat because they're, as you can look through them, it's not just a dictionary, it's an encyclopedia, there's trivia, there's all sorts of things. And what we've done in the past, we've done, when we give them to the kids, we do an assembly. Well, of course, this year we couldn't do that. But just since we've been doing it, we've given a total of over 6,700 dictionaries to the children in this county. So, just wanted to let you know, this is our commitment every year that we do this. And we also, Vicki wanted me to speak a moment about our golf tournament that we do every year, and with that, the proceeds from that, we usually earn usually between $12,000 and $15,000, and that money goes to scholarships for our seniors. And every year, depending on, we work with the counselors, and we, I think we did eight $1,500 scholarships last year. So, we're getting ready to do our golf tournament again, May 12th. If you all like to golf, we'd love to have you. And the proceeds from that, again, will go to our seniors in the county. We have one other project that we are doing this year. It's called Seminar for Tomorrow's Leaders, and we are in the process of getting applications for children that are interested in leadership, and we sponsored three children, $500, and it's a three-day course through Rotary, and it's to help define their leadership skills and helping them move forward and helping career placement. We're hoping in the next couple of years, again, years ago, we had a Rotary Act Club, which is for high school students that are interested in leadership, to help get them into Rotary and leadership, and we're hoping to redefine that and get that back started in the next few years, along with an interact club, which is at the school, elementary school level. So, anyway, just wanted to let you know what we're doing and our commitment to the children in Stanley County. We're happy to do it. It's always one of the favorite projects that we do. So, we're looking forward to next year, hopefully doing an assembly again. So, thank you very much for your time.
And I'd like to also point out Rotary is very much a friend of Stanley County Schools. Even this past Saturday, when we had our vaccination clinic, there were Rotarians that were volunteering to help with that process.
Thanks, Vicki. Yeah, yeah. We've got a good group. Dr. Lefler is one of our Rotarians, Vicki's one of our Rotarians, and we just, we just love Stanley County. We love giving back, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your contribution and dedication. Next agenda item is the consent agenda for approval of the minutes of the February 2nd, 18th, and 19th meetings. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, they'll stand approved as presented. Next on the agenda is the 2021-2022 calendar. Ms. Calver.
So, in your packets this evening, there were copies of the proposed calendars. As you'll recall, there was a calendar approved last spring, but then it was submitted to the State Department. It was met with much question, so based on the feedback we've received, we need to adopt a new calendar. Now, I will tell you, this, the calendars that you see before you this evening are based on state laws, the parameters given to us through those laws. However, we are hearing there's some talk that there is a possibility that the state may allow us to start earlier, like they did this year. But since people need to go ahead and make summer plans, we felt we needed to go ahead and adopt a calendar because it's, we're into March now. So, this, this calendar is based upon the parameters set in the law. However, should the state change the starting date, we also have a calendar, I have one in my files, that I would bring to you if they allow us to start earlier. And actually, that would be our hope, is that we would get to start earlier. So, we've got the early college calendar and the traditional calendar. The first day for the traditional students would be Monday, August 23rd. The law states that you can start no earlier than the Monday closest to the 26th, and so this year, it ended the way the days fell, that we were able to start really a little earlier than normal, which would be the 23rd. And the student's last day would be June the 8th. And I will also add, while you're looking at that, originally, we first tried to create a calendar that the students would be finished with exams, our high school students, by Christmas break. However, that meant that our first and second quarter would be shorter than our third and fourth quarter, and so we had some concerns that that short, shortchanging our high school students and their courses in first and second quarter. And so, really, it only affected the, the high schools, so we also polled the high schools, and it was a true split. Some of them wanted to go ahead and finish before Christmas, and some of them wanted to go ahead and do the full 45-day quarters, and so that's why we had the exams will be after Christmas.
Questions?
I have some questions. Ms. Calver?
Yes.
I think that, well, first of all, I think my question is, did, were all, were all of our teachers able to give input to, to this calendar? I mean, they were able to give their input?
Because of the quick turnaround time, I set a draft calendar to principals and then asked them to share it with their staff and then give me any feedback. And so, some of, so I received that feedback, and then we, where we could, a lot of the feedback was, we'd really like to start earlier, and, but we can't do that within the confines of the law. And then a lot of that, that feedback was worked in, where we could, into this final calendar. A perfect example is, I'll refer you to the ER days, the last day before Christmas, the last day before summer, summer break. That was feedback we received from teachers or from the schools, that they would like to have that. Also, another example would be the feedback we received about the day before Thanksgiving break. We had originally, the original draft had that as an early release day, and feedback was, could we have a professional day that day that's not sheltered? So, if people have to travel, that they could, you know, take that day off, take an annual leave day and travel. So, and then also, other feedback we had was to, since we would, if we were going after Christmas for exams, then let's have the full week before Christmas off, so it doesn't push us right up to Christmas. So, those were some things. Also, feedback we received was that ER days, early release days, a lot of times, just to throw them in there would, is a waste of time, so we didn't have, the only early release we had were the day before Christmas and then the last day of school. There were some questions about remote learning days.
That, that was going to be my question because we've done such a good job, it seems like with remote. I know our teachers have worked hard and our students have picked up on the remote. It looks like a long time between September, October, and then, of course, others in there, like your February, your March, everything. I mean, could we not build in some remote days?
So, the way we, the way we first got, this year, we were required to have five remote days.
Right.
But that's because the state allowed us to start five days sooner. So, if the state were to say, okay, we're going to allow you to start school sooner, then I would think they would put in that caveat of the five remote days. So, that's one of those things we're holding out on to see if the state puts that recommendation out there. And based on the COVID, our, our COVID cases and the state of affairs, that's something we could certainly add, like we did this year.
I will say this, we produced a calendar because we had to, but there are several bills still going through the General Assembly that address early starts and calendar flexibility. So, a lot of this is up for change as these bills start to move through the House and the Senate.
So, even if, like, we give approval to this...
We need to approve a calendar to have a calendar on...
We may come back next month and...
In my opinion, I see us coming back at some point to readdress the calendar. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Again, my concern is, can we not, even with this calendar, put some remote days in where it is a very long stretch for teachers and to allow our teachers to, I guess I even look at quarters, when the quarter ends, to be able to allow our teachers some time where they can work on their grades and be able to have conferences set up? And it, and it seems like they could do that if, if remote days were in place.
So, the calendar you see before you tonight is pretty typical, pre-COVID calendar?
Yes.
Where we do have a sheltered professional day at the end of the first quarter, and we also have it a professional day at the end of the third quarter because by board policy, they're supposed to offer parent conferences at the end of the first and the third quarter. I will tell you, as a former elementary teacher, I didn't get all my conferences done in one day. I'd have to do it after school or before school or, you know, in extra time.
Exactly.
And then to your point about scheduling in a remote day, if we do that, it wouldn't change it as far as what counts for a school day.
Right.
So, but if it's a remote day, teachers would need to be online in instruction with those students.
Right, and I realize that they are, they would be instructing. I understand that. It just seems like also, remote days, and of course, I know there's some principals sitting out here, and I don't know if they'll nod yes or no to me, but it seems like also on a remote day that there might be some time, especially, I'm thinking about our elementary or our middle, to be able to work in a little bit more conferences and that's...
The only issue going to run in there is you haven't brought the kids to school. So, then, those kids, they do around transportation, things like that, you know, the parents are going to have to bring them later on into the day, and that would kind of run into the same as just doing it after school or something like that when the parents were, we're not at work and we're more able to be flexible with their ability to provide transportation.
Okay. Well, I guess my final comment is, I hope that this calendar can change. I hope we can start earlier.
We do too.
Yeah.
And I hope that there's a way we can finish earlier. That's, that's my wish, and, you know, I appreciate all that our teachers are doing, and I do think that they would, I do feel like they would appreciate having some built-in remote days.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Calver.
You bet.
You have a question?
I would just like to say, if at all possible, if we do get to start earlier, I think finishing up those exams before Christmas would be huge.
Absolutely, and that's our, our main goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cal.
So, do we have a motion?
Oh, sorry. Board will, Chair will entertain a motion.
Well, I move that we approve the calendar, both calendars, traditional and the early college.
Motion by Ms. Gibson to have a second. A second. Second by Mr. Sorensen. Any discussion? Any of those in favor say aye. As opposed to no? End of motion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Committee reports. Instructional program, Ms. Gibson?
I have no report, but just to let the board know, we are meeting, I believe it is the 9th. It's going to be at 2:00 PM, and that will be with Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Facilities, Mr. Graves.
Oh, I had a quick question.
Mark it.
From Member Gibson. Did we want to make any reference to the discussion about the new social studies curriculum that we talked about at the retreat? There was, there was some good information about...
Well, that, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe when we have that meeting, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, I think, has several things that she's going to be bringing to our committee, and I'm sure that's probably one that will be touched on. And of course, even if we're not, someone's not serving on that committee, you're certainly welcome to, to be at that committee meeting. Thank you. Yes.
Sure. I was just going to mention that, that during our retreat, the subject was brought up, and I thought that the administration had a great plan on how to handle it, but I didn't have all the details, so, but I'm, just let the public know that we're aware of it and, and they've got a great plan on how to, how to address it. Thanks. And I don't have...
No facilities.
No facilities.
All right. Finance, Ms. Sorensen.
Finance Committee did meet, and we discussed budget amendments with the RCF, Mr. Dudley.
Good evening. As you should have in front, in your packet in front of you, the budget amendment number one that I took to the Finance Committee earlier today. Just to give you some highlights on the, the packet, state funds, we have a budget amendment adjustment of roughly $3,806,000. Page two of the amendment is local funds. We actually have a decrease of a budget amendment there of $1,41,000. Third page, federal funds. We have a budget adjustment there of roughly $3.4 million increase. Page four of child nutrition funds, there's roughly about a $16,509 increase in the budget. Page five, other specific revenue or Fund Eight, as you may know, is, there's a $230,794 budget adjustment increase. And then the last page is capital outlay funds of a $29,085 increase, with a total budget adjustment through February the 28th is $6,445,746.04. Have any questions?
And you require a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments presented by the CFP.
I move that we approve the budget amendments.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Watson, okay. Any discussion?
I would just like to say to Mr. Dudley, enormous amount of work, thank you, Mr. Dudley. I would just, I would, I would...
Uh, page two of the amendment is local funds, we actually have a decrease of a budget amendment there of a million forty-one thousand. Uh, third page, federal funds, we have a budget adjustment there of roughly $3.4 million dollar increase. Uh, page four of child nutrition funds, there's roughly about a $16,509 dollar, uh, increase in the budget. Uh, page five, other specific revenue, or Fund Eight, as you may know, is, there's a $230,794 budget adjustment increase. And then the last page is capital outlay funds of a $29,085 increase, uh, with a total budget adjustment through February the 28th is $6,445,746 and four cent. Have any questions?
And you require a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments presented by the CFP.
I move that we approve the budget amendments.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watson, okay. Uh, any discussion?
I would just like to say to Mr. Dudney, enormous amount of work, thank you, Mr. Dudney. I would just, I would, I would, I would dare say this is just an extra large amount of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Personnel, Ms. Watson.
I report.
Policy, Ms. Poplin, I believe you have a number of policies.
Yeah, if you'll bear with me, um, there's quite a few. Uh, the policies are up for final approval, are Policy 1510, school safety, Policy 1710, discrimination harassment.
We vote.
That's what we were discussing.
Pardon me, Ms.?
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, hang on, we, I've got a backup here again, I had another brain cramp this evening.
I messed things up, didn't I?
Yes, you did, thank you very much, I appreciate that. That extra large remark made a problem for me. So, at this time, if there's no further discussion on the budget amendments, the Chair will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please don't say no. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dudney and Mr. Loud for bringing that to my attention. I'll wipe the sweat in just a moment. Um, okay, now, Ms. Poplin, I'm sorry.
Okay, the ones that we have for, um, final approval are Policy 1510, school safety, Policy 1710, discrimination harassment, Policy 1740, student and parent grievance, 1742, responding to complaints, 1750, grievance procedure for employees, 1760, prohibition of against relations, retaliation, sorry, Policy 2120, Code of Ethics, Policy 2121, Board Member Conflict, Policy 4001, equal educational opportunities, 4040, staff-student relations, Policy 5070, public records, Policy 7232, discrimination harassment in the workplace, Policy 1310, parent involvement, Policy 1725, Policy 1726, Policy 2500, Policy 4023, Policy 4202, Policy 7503, and Policy 2300.
As these have been tabled already for the, uh, last thirty days?
Yes.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the policies as amended?
Motion by Mr. Graves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And those policies are approved.
Okay, there also is another packet of policies for first read that will be tabled for thirty days and considered for final approval at the next board meeting. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin.
Uh, Chairman Chance, I am gonna recommend that the board take, uh, action on first read on the policy for transfer, which is 4150.
4150.
Yes, the one we forward, yes, sir. Yeah, and, and the reason we need to do so is because if we do start the transfer process that the board wants us to, we need to start it sooner than later.
Okay, so, does anyone want a moment to read over Policy 4150?
Adjusted a little bit of the language, but the, the spirit of the policy has not changed.
Okay, well, it's discussed two weeks ago, um, during our retreats, or is there any specific concern with the new wording? Apparently you said the, the, um, content of the policy is the same, correct?
It's, it's right at the end. Yes, sir, it's the last one.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have a question about is did we define a, um, set, a hardship, a set of hardships?
A set of hardships?
Yes.
You mean, what constitutes a hardship?
Right.
Uh, I believe, give me a look on, under Section D, subsection C, hardship, uh, I believe that is an explanation that will hopefully answer.
Yeah, that was the expl, the one you left over for the last one, and, uh, it would be my recommendation through my experience, the not itemized hardships.
Okay.
Everyone clear on that? Ms. Gibson.
But if, yeah, if you would like to adjust that, uh, C in, or the wording or anything, we could definitely do that now as well, as Ms. Poplin. Hold on.
Ms. Gibson, question?
Um, I think my, my question, Dr. Dennis, as, wh- when does this, when does the transfer process start? What's the first day?
Normally, uh, from what I was informed, it started in February, the, the first of February, but, you know, we've had this policy hanging out that we wanted to make sure that we had galvanized before we started it, so, but we need to start it sooner or later because based on the, uh, number of policy or, uh, requests that the, that the school district normally receives, even doing them in batches like, um, Ms. Poplin and the group had suggested, that we need to get it started sooner than later, so, uh, but there is a definitive date in June of when the policies have to, or, excuse me, the transfers have to be received that's, uh, that's put in policy.
And I, I guess my, my question is, um, this is soon going to be on our, on our website, it will soon be there, and will it also be, will some of this information, which seems a little anew, can, can this also be on our website? I mean, the whole policy?
Generally, generally what we can do is yes, you're, you're exactly right. So we'll have the, we'll have the actual form that the parent would fill out, and with it would be a direct or, a direct, you know, would direct you to the policy, and we could even all, we could even put in a little caveat here that there's been policy changes and you need to read a new policy.
I would like that.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Yes, you still want to entertain a motion tonight for approval on first read of 41?
My recommendation to the board is approve the policy as presented on first read.
Do I have a motion that, uh, Policy 4150, school assignment, be approved on first read tonight with the documented changes?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, Policy 4150 upon first read with documented changes.
Motion by Mr. Graves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sorenson, is there any further discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion carries. I think 4150 is adopted. Uh, Legislative Resource Network, Dr. Dennis or Ms. Gibson?
We have no updates at this time.
Uh, Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Blake Lewis.
Good evening, I have one item for action this evening. In the very back of your packet, you will see a price quote from Edmentum. Uh, this was mentioned also at the retreat, but we held it over for action tonight. Uh, as you know, Edmentum is the company that we have been working with for our unit and our credit recovery. We have utilized them for credit recovery for some time now, but, uh, with COVID and the need for, uh, students to make up, uh, missed content, uh, just due to lack of in-person instruction on a regular basis in our secondary schools, we have, uh, begun to utilize them for that unit recovery option. So we do have PRC 165 funds, which were part of those CARES Act dollars that would cover this purchase, that would extend our contract through August 22nd of 2025. So we would not need to be searching for funds to continue this program, um, up until the point of the beginning of school year in 2025. So we already have these funds allocated, I did write the proposal for the use of those funds to fit, uh, the Edmentum contract extension. So, um, I would ask for approval on that this evening.
Board will entertain a motion that the Edmentum contract, uh, as presented by Dr. Blake Lewis, uh, for $58,998, who extend the contract through 2025 with the use of COVID funds, be approved.
I move we approve the Edmentum contract through, um, through 2025, I believe, using the COVID funds.
I've, I've got a question. Are we gonna need it that long? I mean, that's a long time, that's four years.
We will continue to use it for, um, unit recovery, um, excuse me, for credit recovery, that is something that is, uh, an ongoing, uh, need in the district. We also have the opportunity to use it for just curriculum supports as well. So, uh, one of the things that my team and I are working on through the summer is rewriting some of our curriculum guides, and so we will be referencing, uh, resources available within Edmentum to be used, uh, in that document as well.
And Dr. Left, I'll also answer a question. Um, all school systems have some form of this, even pre-COVID, and it, we, I think we used it for credit recovery.
We have.
And before, we just kind of expanded on it a little bit. But that's a good question. Um, and I will tell you that, um, I've dealt with a lot of these, switching back and forth. Edmentum seems the one that had the most rigor to it that I've dealt with. Uh, I know a school system went from Edmentum to another solution because it was more rigorous, but that was because they were using the wrong capacity for the wrong students. Students needed a lot of help, but, um, I'm familiar with it, and, and the price that you presented with is a very reasonable price for that product for three years.
Motion, second, I need a second, please, that this contract be approved. Second by Ms. Watson, any further discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. End of motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Personnel Administration, Student Services, Ms. Calvert.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to draw your attention to the updated personnel agenda that was at, at your seats. Uh, additions were added and are in red. Section one requires no action, but section two does require action.
Chair will entertain a motion that section two of Personnel Agenda. Motion by Ms. Watson, section two be approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Graves, any discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Auxiliary Services, uh, Mr. Dudney?
In your packet, you'll have a list of some surplus items, there's a couple of items there, that is child nutrition equipment that we will be sell, selling through GovDeals.com, one's a mixer and other's a slicer. We need approval for that, do that.
Okay, so, Chair will entertain a motion on selling the surplus child nutrition equipment.
I move we sell the surplus child nutrition equipment.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, is there a second? Second by Ms. Poplin, is there any discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Public comments? We have no public comments. All right, um, Chief Lieutenant's comments, Dr. Dennis?
Thank you, Chairman Chance, um, as far as the calendar goes, um, today was Read Across America Day, which also known as Dr. Seuss Day. Uh, I was privileged to be able to read to the students at Indy Elementary School, I know Ms. Calvert read a, a book as well, uh, they seemed really excited, I, I really liked the way they put together the program, so I'll give a little shout out to Ms. Altri and her team, they did a great job, uh, at least introducing their students to Read Across America Day, and I'm sure other schools, uh, had, uh, fine programs as well. Um, this month is National Women's History Month, which is annual celebration of women's contributions in history. Uh, March 7th through 13th is National School Social Worker Week, excuse me, which highlights their ability to light the way, emphasize the whole child, collaborating with other professionals, and linking students and families when needed services. And like I said beforehand, we do have some excellent, uh, school social workers, uh, which we had more, but the one we have, uh, they, they work very hard, and, uh, we're very in debt to, uh, what they do for, for our students every day. Uh, and the last, as far as the calendar goes, is National School Breakfast Week, is March 8th through 12th, which celebrates the importance of a nutritious school breakfast. Uh, I also have a couple, oh, yeah, and Mar, and March is Arts in Our Schools Month. Uh, as you know, uh, football has started, we had our first football game, I was glad to finally attend a football game, I hadn't been to one in a long time, and I was, uh, able to go watch, uh, South Stanley play South Davidson, which they, uh, played very well, won handily, and it was just nice to be back in that atmosphere, even though the current game was on a Thursday, so the governor's, the governor's mandate had not come in, had not came out yet to expand the crowd, but, uh, even though we had a crowd of only around a hundred, uh, parents and mostly parents and, you know, observers, fans, I would say, that it was a very good environment, uh, which is, it's just something I think the community needed. Vaccine Clinic, uh, I know Ms. Calvert, and we had some people in our nurses work the vaccine clinic the other Saturday in an effort to get all of our teachers vaccinated to, so choose the vaccination. I heard it went very well, it started around nine o'clock, I think it ended around 2:30, and they were able to, uh, dole out 500 vaccines, 500 different inoculations, which, you know, is quite a feat. And I do want to also thank the Health Department for all their hard work thus far and helping get our teachers and our staff vaccinated. We are currently given the ACT, it started on the 23rd of February, uh, it, it's a little different than it used to be, uh, it used to be you had a hard fast date to give it and a hard and fast date to make it up, of course, because of COVID now there's a window, but we're hoping to have at least eighty percent of our students by next Thursday that have taken, juniors that have taken the ACT. Registration is now open for Oakboro and Indy, if, uh, any parents are interested in Oakboro STEM option or the dual-language option at Indy, that registration is now open as long, uh, excuse me, along with our kindergarten registration, which is also open, so I would, uh, ask parents to go ahead and start getting their kids registered for kindergarten so we can go ahead and start making plans to, uh, best accommodate them. Uh, there are some bills in the Senate, I talked to Representative Sasser the other day, uh, the bill that had been vetoed, um, which was the, you know, bringing the students back bill, uh, it is going back up for vote, um, looks like it may pass in, in some direction or form. There is also a bill in the Senate to, uh, the increased capacities at events, you know, Governor Cooper increased the capacity, but I know there are other capacity increasing bills that are going through as well. Uh, there is the bill that it looks like it's gonna go through rather easily, and that's the summer school bill, which would entail Stanley County Schools and all LEAs to have a six-week summer school, uh, for all students, uh, any student is essentially who wants to take it, we're gonna target students who need it, but we need to offer it to any student who, who would want it if that bill goes through, and, uh, there would be CARES, well, we would have to use CARES Act money to pay to fund that summer school. And, uh, the only other bill in the Senate I'm aware of that would be of concern to the board, of course, are the bills to, uh, increase the, uh, when we could actually start school for calendar flexibility bills. So, uh, does anyone have any questions on my update thus far? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Art Dennis. Board member comments, Ms. Poplin, I'm gonna start with you, we'll see you in a second.
Um, I would like to start by congratulating our science fair winners who placed at the regional level, um, it was good to see them in here, and here are the things that they're doing in their, um, science classes. Uh, congratulate the principals that participated in the remote learning program. Um, a big thank you to our social workers with it being National Social Worker Month. Um, we all know with COVID and home visits and students who aren't in the traditional classroom daily, that has been a feat, um, getting with those students and making sure those needs are met, so we really appreciate, um, all that they're doing. Uh, thank you to the Rotary for the dictionaries for third graders and all that they do for, um, our students and our community. Um, I want to thank, uh, all the administration that helped to organize the board retreat, that was very nice and very well done, and I appreciate that. Um, Arts in Schools and History Month and Breakfast Week, and then the Vaccine Clinic, I would like to thank the nurses and staff who volunteered, and also the Health Department for, um, getting our teachers in there, and I know that took a big weight off of many of them that were concerned about teaching on the front lines without that vaccine, so that's great to hear that we had 500. That is all, thank you.
Ms. Poplin, Dr. Left?
I would also like to congratulate the young people doing the, uh, science presentation, because I must admit, I wasn't on the front row of doing that, I was on the back row that early in school, and I think that really And I think they'll really be great scientists taking the initiative this early to do it. I think it's great that they're doing it, and it shows that they've got good leadership at school and at home to get it done. So I'd like to congratulate them. Also, I'd like to congratulate our school on what they've done with the COVID-19. There was a lot of, we shouldn't start back when we did after the Martin Luther King holiday. And our staff and students and parents have all done wonderful. And our numbers have not gone up dramatically. In fact, they're coming down, which is wonderful, because we've still got a positivity rate that's higher than what the CDC would like. So I think they're doing an excellent job. And I would also like to have everybody keep on guard about our education. I read in the paper today that our students' reading and math are not at grade level. They've lost as compared to what they were this time last year, and we expect that. And we've had people online and at school, the teachers have done a good job, the parents have done a good job, the grandparents, but we even need to do better because we're not at the grade level. So if a grandparent, a friend, a neighbor, if anybody can get and read with these children, do math with these children, just 15 minutes each of them a day, that would really help. And I think our school system has done a wonderful job in our community, and we just need to keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Art Lewis. Ms. Gibson?
Well, I certainly echo what Ms. Poplin and Dr. Leffler have said. I'm very thankful for our county office, for our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our students and our families. I know it has been a tough year, but I'm just so proud. I'm proud of our school system, and I'm proud of everyone that has a part in that. And I thank you so much. Congratulations to the regional Science Fair winners. Science was my greatest subject. Y'all remember Dr. or Mr. Harold Blalot? Remember Mr. Blalot? It really was not my subject in school to be proud about. I think he had me copy a whole chapter in the science book one time. I just wasn't paying attention. And anyway, I was rolling up those little spitball, little wax things that you put on your braces, and I was throwing them at everybody in class, and I got caught. But physical science was not my... But anyway, thank you to those winners and our science teachers. And Jennifer Snyder is just remarkable. So just a shout out to her and all that she does there at Oakboro STEM. Very thankful for our distinguished leadership participants. I still see Ms. Joy Hathcock sitting out here. Thank you to all of our wonderful administrators. And certainly, I appreciate everything that our social workers do. I felt like a little kid when I was handed this book. Did y'all not feel like a little kid? I mean, it was like, oh, my goodness, I have a book. I mean, I don't know about y'all. I mean, I love the laptops and the Chromebooks and everything, but oh, wow. Just getting a book, I can't wait to go home and start learning some of these definitions that I don't know. But anyway, I appreciate the Rotary. They do a wonderful job. And thank you to, I want to echo what Ms. Poplin said. Our board retreat was just wonderful, and I learned so much. It was busy, but it was...
And cold.
It was cold. But it was fun, and I felt like I got to know not only the county office here, but our other board members. We just had a grand time, and that was an inside joke that I made with Mr. ...
Yes, I know.
And all, but...
I was aware.
Okay, I just couldn't help it. That's the mischievous part of me.
I will blame that brain cramp on you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Sorenson.
Sometimes it's easy on the board, as easy as a teacher too, to get caught up in the minutia, budgets, the plethora of laws that we have to deal with and other issues, personnel issues. I kind of walked in here with hanging my head from our closed session because just, you know, so many details and things. Seeing those three kids stand up and take their awards brought me so far back to that, this is why we're here moment. I hear what they say, did some kind of computer programming thing or something? I didn't catch exactly what the two teams did, but that's the stuff that feeds a teacher's heart, and that's the stuff that feeds mine. In the Navy, we had an expression, bravo zulu means you did a fantastic job. I'm just going to focus on those in my comments. Bravo zulu to the teachers and those kids. Life is a competition, and if they learn at that stage to be a little bit better, a little bit sharper, they're way ahead of the game. I tried to write down the names of all the admins that got the remote learning award. I can't read my scribbles, so I'll just make a blanket, a blanket. Thank you, and God bless you for doing all that you do, seriously. Social workers, hardest part of being a teacher for me was those issues that ended up going to social workers. Between our guidance counselors and social workers, they are supermen, superwomen. They have a job I couldn't do, so that's off the... I did want to mention the Rotary presentation. I had a student won that Rotary scholarship several years ago. He's now an engineer making six figures, and I'm not saying that scholarship did all that, but it helped give him confidence. It wasn't just a money thing, but it helped give him confidence to go to NC State and succeed. So every year, they do a lot for us, but we don't really... Last but not least, I'd echo what Dr. Leffler said. Previous board and several people up here from our previous board that had the guts to make the decision to put our schools back in person the best that we could, the A B slash C system. The whole state's playing catch-up, most of it's playing catch-up. And I just wanted to say thank you to them for having the courage. Yes, there's been problems, and there's been shutdowns and all that kind of thing. My own two grandchildren started the year out in public school in Gaston County and have been in a private school since they decided to go for remote. So when we talk about kids losing ground, I feel like my grandkids are in good shape and because of our previous board, our Stanley County School is in good shape. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Sorenson. Ms. Watson?
I'd like to echo everything that everyone said. The Rotary is a good organization to be in, and I appreciate all that they do for us, social workers. I know that's a hard job, and I do appreciate what they do. The young boys that did the science awards. My son-in-law is a science teacher in seventh grade in Fort Mill, South Carolina, and I just see how excited he is every time I go down there about what he's doing. So it's a good thing, you know, that our kids are starting that young. And our principals, I appreciate them going to that remote learning thing. I just appreciate all that our teachers, our principals, everyone does. I know it's been hard, and they've worked really hard. And this county office has worked very, very hard of getting everything the way it's supposed to be. And maybe sooner or later, we'll be rid of these masks and we can get back to normal, which I hope we can. But it's, you know, it's just great to know that everything is going as good as it is in Stanley County. And I know one principal told me this last year, she said, I would put our system up against any system around. And I think that's the way we should think. So everybody have a good weekend. Thank you.
Ms. Watson, Mr. Graves?
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the retreat in person, but I was able to attend it remotely. Thank God for technology. It was fantastic. I'll tell you, whenever you're remote, most of us spend a lot of time in remote meetings. It's easy to tune out, especially if you turn off the video camera. But it was very exciting. I did not tune out at all. I listened to all of it. I was incredibly impressed. I've said this before, and all the other board members have said it too, but I'm constantly, just constantly impressed of the hard work and the quality of what the central office does is amazing. It's amazing. I have very high standards before I compliment anybody. And this board continues, or excuse me, this, well, the board does too, no offense. But the central office continues to earn my gratitude and praise every time there's a meeting. I learned so, I mean, it's not just meetings for the sake of meetings or information for the sake of sharing information. It's very useful things, and what we're able to do here in the county, thank God that our students have the staff that we've got. It's like Mr. Sorenson said, there's a lot of students, I think, you know, his grandchildren and his relatives aren't falling too far behind. I think in Stanley County, even though we're struggling, I think it could have been a lot worse. So, and I know parents are grateful for that, certainly. Having said that, I did want to point out, we had received an email from a former board member who had raised the issue, and maybe this is something that we can focus on in the coming months. One of the big concerns that I've had ever since COVID, we had to start closing the schools last year, is how quickly students can fall behind. I'm very concerned. I'm probably more concerned at the fact that I'm not really hearing anything coming out of Raleigh. I'm not hearing anything coming out of Washington, D.C. about conversations about how they're going to plan to address the gaps that have been created. And then, you know, seeing the Science Fair winners, which was fantastic. And I agree with all the board members. Congratulations to all the award winners and the faculty and staff and the students. But it got me thinking about summer school, about this program that we just approved the purchase of extending out to 2025. It's, you know, fortunately, we don't have to have a lot of students in summer school because we have programs like this where they can earn their grades back throughout the year. So I think that's an invaluable tool. And I only just learned about it this year. But I was thinking to myself, if we actually invested in education, and I'm not talking about just salaries and things like that. I'm talking about music camps and science camps and art camps and things during the summer, and math camps and all of this stuff, reading camps. If the state would actually fund things like that and keep transportation going, because it only takes a little bit of effort. And what got me was somebody had said, if you only read 15 minutes a night, you can keep your child where they are or help them advance, catch back up. It's true, everyone will tell you that. And I was thinking, why are we just doing it right now? Why aren't we doubling down on these types of programs that can help students in North Carolina excel within the country? I think it's going to take not only a national effort to bring the kids back, but I think we should take them further. We'll see. That's going to be a tough discussion. But I do appreciate everybody. I just wanted to say that thanks again. And hopefully, we'll be able to share more information about the data that was shared at the retreat at some point, because it was fantastic. It was absolutely fantastic. I don't want to spend more time on that tonight, but it was really great. And I wish, if that was recorded, if it's still somewhere, that somebody could go watch it. I hope they do, because it was amazing. The students in Stanley County are doing really well. There's a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 6.
It's my recommendation the board reconsider's the next meeting as it will land on spring break.
Correct. We had talked about that earlier, Dr. Dennis and I. Our next board meeting is scheduled for the week of spring break. I know there'll be a number of board members who are not going to be here either. So I would entertain a motion that the board consider moving our meeting back to the 13th of April, provided this room is available. It's not available? Okay.
We'll just have to move the date, and the place will be to be determined.
Okay.
Unless you, I don't have the list, unless Ms. Miller does. I don't have their schedule right now of when it's available.
When this room is available?
Yes, ma'am.
No, sorry, I'd have to give specific dates and times.
Yeah, so I guess we could make a motion to move it to another date and with a...
Place to be...
Place to be determined, yes, sir. And I do want, just, I'm sorry, just a caveat for the media or whatever. When I said earlier, 500 vaccinations at the clinic, there were also some other educational workers like daycare and people like that. So it wasn't 500 Stanley County school employees, it was 500 overall, just for the media's information.
I've heard a total. So I'll entertain a motion that we move our meeting in April to the 13th. If that's agreeable, and we'll determine our location at a later time once we check availability of the room. I have a motion. Thank you. I was sitting here on my laurels there for a moment. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any and all those in favor of moving the April board meeting to April the 13th? Say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. I will ascertain a motion that the board return to closed session for additional discussion on attorney-client matters, student matters, and personnel matters under the appropriate North Carolina general statutes.
Make it go to closed session.
Second.
In a sec. All those in favor say aye. And there will be a five-minute recess, then we're out.